To order, please. And as always, we are going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
This is our, this is our executive session, right?
Well, we're going to call the meeting to regular session first pledge.
Okay.
Exactly. Are you ready, Steve? Excellent. Everybody commute and rise if you choose, and I will say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so Mike, we are, it's time for us to move into executive session. Do you have a motion?
Mike, you're muted.
Sorry, Mike.
Mike, you're muted.
What I said was, no, I don't have the motions, but I'm getting them right now and I've got them. But you got, had to get the power cord. I had to get the motions. I call it a push. All right, one moment. I'm so sorry, everyone. My computer's going very slow. Okay, um, so I moved to go into executive session at 6:03 PM pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Unit A, Unit C. Executive session will include the School Committee Superintendent Downing, Assistant Superintendent Dr. McGuire, Director of People Personnel Services Joan De Angelis, and Director of Human Resources Anne Marie Stoica. School Committee member Brett Collins will be excused from executive session due to a conflict of interest. School committee will return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
White De Angelis.
Mr. Harest, would you mind adding Pat Maroney?
Uh, sure. Uh, can I just amend this with?
Just say add Pat Maroney.
Including Business Manager Pat Maroney.
Second.
Thanks, Steve. Um, all right, everybody. Let's take the role. And by the way, as Chairperson, I do declare that discussion of strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may, that the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on such and our bargaining or litigating position of the public body for Unit A and Unit C. Uh, so the motion to go to executive session, we can take the role. Uh, I vote yes. Joe?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Karen? Yes. Mary?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
All right. So we are moving into executive session. So Dan, I'm going to ask that you. Keely is here joining us again. So Keely, you have your three minutes. Are you ready to go?
Yep.
All right, go for it.
Hello. Um, I continue to re, oh, excuse me. I continue to reach out to you because you are in a position to be the voice for the people. Your meetings have remained virtual while other towns meet in person. This makes it much harder to discuss what's going on. You are making decisions and allowing decisions to take place that affect children and families over three towns. I sent an email at the start of the week, which I thought was very respectful. Yet I have not received a response from anyone. While it's clear that you do not share my beliefs, your job is still to support me to some level as a parent in the district. There are 351 towns across the state, all with their own unique qualities, and this mandate is still senseless regarding masking. Masking relates to health, and Commissioner Riley and the Shova School System is not in a position to pose health decisions on a group of people. Even a doctor cannot impose or mandate a patient to take medicine or perform a procedure. This is based on the Hippocratic oath, beneficence, non-maleficence, justice, and respect for the patient's autonomy. So what happened to autonomy? In a regional school district made of several towns, we are teaching children to be complacent. We are allowing fear over facts. We have continued to place a burden on children that is necessary for adults. Adults have always been the high-risk population, not children. Instead of protecting our children, we have chosen to protect adults instead. We have chosen to play with the physical and emotional states of children at the expense of making adults feel safe. We continue to play the game of hypothetical fear. What if we stopped wearing masks? Many towns are putting in mask mandates, but also many towns have not put in mask mandates. So we can see what's actually happening in real time. Um, what if there are many states that children are not wearing masks in school? And many states are lifting their mask mandates and putting in optional masking. Data across the states is available. A recent study of over 6 million students showed that schools with masking saw 37% more cases of COVID. The NIH has billions to spend on research. None has been spent on masking. Our children are there researching real time. Anxiety, depression, rates of suicide, attempts of suicide are increasing across the country in all ages. It's obvious that masks interrupt learning and communication, and this is a psychological stressor long term. This should be concerning to everyone. The CDC and specialists have stated that cloth masks are ineffective for an airborne virus. They have stated that likely the virus will pass through everyone. I have contracted COVID twice through work. I've worn full PPE when I've seen positive patients, and still I have had COVID. When will you back down from Commissioner Riley and be the leaders of our school district? When will you come together and make a decision on behalf of the children in their future rather than fear and politics? Why are we waiting to find out how this will affect our children and not changing things now? Our children are paying the highest price, yet they remain at the least risk. We are doing more harm to our children in exchange for less harm for adults. We have the dashboard through the NRSD, and we should use that data. The data is up there weekly. I look at it weekly. I look at all the different bits and pieces of it. And we can also look at data through the state and the country. Our children are not the issue, and we need to do something about this. This is just a quote I took from an article that I read today. Maybe it puts things in better perspective than I do. "Imposing on millions of children an intervention that provides little discernible benefit on the grounds that we have not yet gathered solid evidence of its negative effects violates the most basic tenet of medicine. First, do no harm. The foundation of medical and public health interventions should be that they work, not that we have insufficient evidence to say whether they are harmful. Continued mandatory masking of children in schools, especially now that most schoolchildren are eligible for vaccination, fails this test. I continue to advocate for an off-ramp for optional masking for all and not a select population of students."
Keely.
That's it. No, that's it. Where there is, there must be choice.
There's just some speech. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Sorry to hold you to that three minutes, but we.
No, that was it.
Coming in.
I got it in the time for once.
All right, take care.
Bye.
All right, everybody. So we only had one citizen's comment this evening, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We are going to approve the various, a couple of things together and one separately. So Mike, if you'd like to do the first motion for us.
Sure. Uh, move to approve the consent agenda, uh, January 26th, 2022, containing the meeting minutes of January 12th, 2022, and the warrants of January 28th, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Suck it.
And Rich? All right, any discussion? All right, so seeing none, we're going to take the role. I vote yes. Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Steve? Steve, would you like to vote on the motion?
I'm sorry, I did not hear the motion.
Uh, move to, it's the consent agenda motion for January 26th.
Yes, I vote yes.
Thanks. Uh, Amy?
Yes, yep.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Motion passes. So the next item, whoops, the next item we have here is for the meeting minutes for the budget workshop. So Mike, do you have that motion as well?
Yes. I move to approve the fiscal year 23 budget workshop minutes of January 22nd, 2022.
And I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Sharon.
Um, I just, a correction for that. It says that I was not at that meeting, but actually I was.
Indeed. So Alita, can you make that change?
Can't you just vote?
I think that, do the minutes actually say that Sharon was absent?
Was everybody, was everybody at the workshop? I thought, I thought somebody was absent. Maybe I missed it? Alrighty, everybody was there.
Yeah, my memory is failing me. You know, I was there.
Right, I'll correct the minutes.
Okay, thanks, Alita.
I, I think I was there.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion to approve as amended, or can we just proceed?
Joe?
Yes, that's exactly, we just, you'd ask to move to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, so we are voting to approve the minutes as amended. Thank you, Sharon. All right, any discussion? Looks like we're good. All right, so I vote yes. Joe?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Amy?
Yes.
Great. That motion passes. Uh, now we get to move on to our superintendent update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bear with me for a minute as, um, bear with me for a minute as I'm now having the power issue.
Oh, looks like you have the cord in hand, though. So that's good. You're racing time.
Um, and it's, it's the wrong cable. So, I will adjust. I'm on here two screens. I may just have to juggle one screen if that, if that times out. So let me be succinct, and we'll carry on here.
Unless you'd like to start with teaching and learning, and Todd can manage that, and then you can.
I think I'm ready. But thank you, Dr. McGuire. I appreciate it. Um, thank you. In the superintendent's reports, I have a few things today. And, but I will be sharing some slides as well, Madam Chair. This is in response to some questions I received after the budget workshop, but it ties to the agenda item of the update since the workshop. So I can, and it's more of explanation of the assessment that I gave to the Budget and Warrant Committee on Monday evening. But before I do that, uh, I send a, I noticed out to the community yesterday, well, on Friday, and then yesterday we sent in the opt-out options for the antigen at-home antigen testing program that is being provided to us by, uh, DESI, the Department of Public Health and the State of Massachusetts. I'm happy to report, just in one day, our town responded by 1,037 opt-ins for the at-home, uh, testing program. And I, I think it really speaks well of our community. The detail of that communication that's in the school committee report tonight is the email that was sent to, to families. Uh, I'll be doing a second run of that email this Friday. It will be the content of my Friday address to the community uh, as we develop the opt-ins for this. And essentially, what this program will do for us is we will distribute at-home testing kits to our students to take home. And each kit has two tests, and they take the test on their designated, uh, day that is listed in the chart in the memo. And so what it gives us the ability to do is PCR test, and then three days later, at home, families follow up with an antigen test. When I sent that communication out yesterday, I, I'm happy to report to the committee, I received zero emails this morning in regards to that question. And that voices to, and then I saw the high participation rate in the signup. And that tells me, uh, that our community is responding in a way that I, I noted in the letter. And that is, this is something we're already doing. Of the 130 cases that were identified, uh, in our dashboard last week, 10 of those cases were actually found positive tests at school. The other 120 cases were positives that were identified by tests at home or in the doctor's office, or wherever somebody went to go get that test. So really, our community is taking into their own hands the need to test and do those assessments. And I think that's a great sign for moving into this program. Because now, having a PCR test and at-home antigen tests, do, being able to do that twice a week increases our overall testing coverage of all individuals to where it removes the need for the test and stay program and contact tracing. Because you're able to do regular testing along the way. And that's a good thing because it opens up people to, particularly our nurses, to be more available for a whole variety of needs. I will say also, the dramatic drops we're beginning to see in positivity rates across the state and the counties, I think we're beginning to see in the school system as well. So those rates are going down. This program is coming into play. And it really has the potential to be a game changer for us in terms of, of that overall testing coverage. But I think a really important piece of this, that is something that's coming along, and I think it's just at the right time. We know Omicron was far more contagious. We also know it was less dangerous compared to previous iterations of COVID. Combine that with our community really taking the onus and control of doing those assessments. We can now start to begin to think and forecast out, what does that mean for our future? So what I'm signaling to you all today is something that I spoke to all of our principals about today, and they're going to be meeting tomorrow. And that is a phase, phase-out or draw-down approach of the various COVID restrictions that we have in our schools. So what I am happy to share with you today that I will put in my community address on Friday, this did not make it into my memo because we made these, uh, decisions this afternoon, is that, uh, beginning February 7th, we will return to visitors in our schools beyond just non-essential educational, uh, visitors. And beginning February 28th, we will be returning for the first time in almost two years to volunteers in our schools again, participating in the daily operations of a school. And we feel like we're safe to go to those places. Uh, we'll, we'll, you know, depending on where we are with our mask, our masking requirements at the time, people would have to follow that guidance and those guidelines. I know the town of Lancaster has a masking mandate for all buildings. So no matter what we do in our school system, if those still exist within our municipal systems, or you'd have to follow them for those buildings. But I think this is the signal that we're beginning to get, that we can prioritize those things. So our principals are going to be working together in a three-phase approach, identifying what are the things that we can do safely in phase two? What are the next steps that would be coming along? So we might be thinking in terms of like, for instance, distancing at lunchtime is a possible phase to approach. We had, and then we follow our infection rates to understand, uh, the, the impact of that. And then the final phase would be going to optional masking. And so I'm hopeful that is here, uh, in our, on the horizon here soon. What I will say is a nuance that was noticed in the superintendent's most recent extension of the masking mandate was for those school systems that applied for the vouch for the waiver for that, that the language previously was, uh, those who are unvaccinated would be required to continue wearing masks. And the language now in the order says, highly recommended to wear a mask. And so we will be following that guidance that we're getting from the state as we have with other, other elements that have been coming in terms of a high recommendation as opposed to a requirement for unvaccinated individuals. Ultimately, when we get to that place, that, that addresses some complexity. But like I said, what we have today that we didn't have in August, that we didn't have in October, that we didn't have at the beginning of December, is this comprehensive, uh, uh, testing and assessment program using our weekly COVID chats, tests, of PCR tests, along with the at-home antigen kits with a high participation rate already within our community to monitor and check our health. So I, I hope you all hear that. It's good news. And, and with that, I know in the phase one approaches, I've also included with our principals that we began to think about, and this transitions into the second element of the report, uh, in terms of field trips, that we can be, begin looking now at reinstituting local field trips for the spring term. So we can start doing those excursions outside of school. Uh, I think we're, we, as I said earlier in the year, out-of-state travel and overnights like outdoor ed require a lot of planning with uncertainty out there. So for the remainder of the school year, we'll stay committed to those elements. But the principals are beginning in earnest to plan for their out-of-state travel trips and outdoor education trips for the 22, 23 school year. So these are all positive signals and positive signs that, that we're headed in the right direction that way. So I think I will stop at that point before I get into the budget update and just solicit any questions from the committee regarding, uh, these recent developments.
Anybody have any questions about this part of the superintendent's report?
Okay.
Kirk, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask the question. Do you have, um, any sense of when that optional masking could start to be considered for our schools, and if you're thinking that the waiver should now apply to schools beyond the high school?
Um, our 80% metric, the Florence Sawyer and Hale are very close to that mark. I, I think I'm going to get, have a better place to understand that in, in about two weeks, Madam Chair. And we're going to get a sense walking up to the February vacation, I think, of what that's going to look like. I'm, I'm going to be very curious to see what the commissioner does with the most recent extension to February 28th. Because having these at-home antigen tests is a real difference maker. So I don't know what the commissioner's move is going to be there. Uh, is it plausible that that will be the end of the statewide masking mandate? It's plausible. Um, so if that is the case, we'll be ready. And part of the work that our principals are going to be doing in this phase and approach, they're, they're beginning the planning for that. I'll report back on that at the, the next school committee meeting.
And am I right in saying that Bolton also has implemented a townwide mask mandate?
Um, I don't know. I've not been notified that Bolton has. It's highly recommended in Bolton. I do know that Stowe recently voted a mask mandate for municipal buildings, but not for the town in general.
Does anybody know if that's true about Bolton? I thought I saw the sign on the country cupboard.
I haven't heard anything.
Okay, maybe not.
Sign on the country cupboard. Leah, that is true. There is a mask mandate in Bolton, in Bolton. I got an email stating that, um, last week or so.
Yeah, so I think that, I heard that too. So, I mean, that, that supersedes anything that the schools would try to do.
That is correct.
Okay. So just note that. All right, any other questions about this part of the superintendent's update? All right, let's move forward.
So, uh, in shifting to, uh, a follow-up from the budget workshop on Saturday, uh, I had an opportunity to appear in front of the Budget Warrant Committee on Monday. Couple of pieces. I just wanted to memorialize a couple of the talking points that I had from Saturday into this memo. Uh, and that is, um, the changes of the mentoring line, teaching, learning, and administration salaries. And, um, uh, looking at, there was, uh, the chapter 70 number that was in the budget book from Saturday was the FY21 number. And we had a good hard number on FY22. So I substituted that with the FY22 number, which was, uh, as you see, a $600,000 difference. So, uh, it's reflected then in the change in percentages. You can see, uh, that change in approximately, uh, $600,000 in the total budget dropped each town assessment by about 1.2%. So you can see those types of changes when we get those revenue streams coming in do have significant impact in reducing those percentages. So it's memorialized here in that memo for you. Um, and to that point, I'm going to share my screen for a moment because some, there were some questions, um, that needed some follow-up regarding explanation of the assessment. I went in great detail on Monday evening with the Budget and Warrant Committee. So I won't go into that same detail tonight. But I do want to go through a general explanation for the town and for you all. And to memorialize it and track these changes, I'm adding the slides to my initial budget workshop presentation with a header slide that's dated so that you can see anything below this is new information from the workshop time. That way, we can kind of follow the story of the budget development. Um, and so when I look at these slides and, uh, please forgive, uh, Madam Chair and the committee, they're rudimentary in presentation. So while maybe not the prettiest, uh, the meat is good. Uh, it, it tells a good story. So as we look at these things, um, across the top, you'll see the fiscal years. And when we have a budget, that voted budget is the number it takes to run the school district. Now, to fund what we run the school district for, we have to look at the high school debt, which goes back to the renovation of the high school over, uh, about 20 years ago. We look at state and local revenue, along with any E and D contributions we make to the budget. So when you subtract the high school debt and state and local revenue from the budget line, the yellow line gives you the amount that the three towns are liable for in paying for the rest of the budget. Now, that line is then divided up into two buckets. One is called the minimum local contribution, and the next one is the total variable assessment. So what is the minimum local contribution? This is the number that the state of Massachusetts tells the towns that they must pay minimally to fund their schools. The school district does not craft this number. So you can see, year over year, from FY17 to FY22, what each town is required to pay with the aggregate of those three towns at the bottom. So the aggregate of the three towns is 26,891 for the current school year. Well, at the very bottom, you can see for yourselves the change in percentages from the state of Massachusetts in the minimum local contribution. This is also known as, in lay terms, called, uh, the wealth index or the ability to pay based on wealth. And it's a formula that is used across the state for towns and regional districts based upon the value of property owned in the town as well as median household income. So when you express that in a line graph, you can see, when we're talking about the median household income, the value of property relative to student enrollment in the schools, the town of Stowe is flat over the last seven years, while the towns of Bolton and Lancaster are increasing. Those are numbers just from the state of Massachusetts. Nothing we decide local. On Saturday, I went into a description on how the enrollment calculations are used to determine the five-year rolling assessment. So I won't repeat that here. But these are our five-year rolling assessment numbers. And when you take the total assessment. And when you take the total assessment and uh take your town and divide it by the total of the enrollment, you see the liability each town has for the variable assessment percentage. That's V A P. So in Bolton, they had in FY twenty-two, their total enrollment of the five-year rolling enrollment is five thousand one hundred seventy divided by fifteen thousand eight hundred fifty-three equals thirty-two percent and change for their assessment. Excuse me, my technology is yelling at me again. I got five percent on that screen, so one of these screens is gonna go out here in just a minute. But that being said, so you can see the changes in that um variable assessment percentage over the last six years relative to each town. So when you apply that percentage to the actual dollars, so in fiscal year twenty-two, the total variable out assessment amount is twenty million seven hundred forty-six thousand. You multiply that by your town's percentage and you get the dollar amount that each town is liable for the variable portion of the assessment. So when you look at it this way, here's your dollars and here's the percent increases for each of your towns according to the variable assessment, which is heavily impacted by census in the town regarding the enrollment of students in our schools in enrollment of school-aged children five to eighteen that I described to you all on Saturday. So if we express it in a line graph, you see this is just the variable assessment that remember in the the minimum contribution, Bolton and Lancaster were closing relative to Stowe. Well, that is true in the variable assessment as well. So when you combine the minimum local contribution and you combine the variable assessment, you get the total amounts for each town to get to that total of forty-seven thousand six hundred thirty-eight that the towns are responsible for to get to the fifty-nine thousand dollar budget. And you can see the percentage increases in the table below that relative to each town. Expressed in a line graph, you can see Bolton and Lancaster climbing in that regard, and over the past four years, Stowe has remained flat. So I described that to you all in in just a basic presentation, just to bring a little bit more clarity to that uh how that that number is derived. And so this is what I'll be working with our town administrators and our finance committee advisory committee leaders uh as well. So with that, Madam Chair, uh I'll be happy to take any questions.
Hi, Mike.
Well, I just wanted to thank you again for the presentation. I mean, I was there on Monday night for budget warrant. This is really the first time in four years that I've actually gotten my head wrapped around the budget uh and and how it's derived. So hats off to you. Um, I really, I I think it's fantastic. I I know that um when we're trying to um derive the district budget, it comes from the minimum local contribution, the total variable assessment, and then there's a smaller percentage, which is E and D. I get E and D, chapter seventy. I understand that. But then there's a piece called local revenue. And I'm just wondering if you can go into a little bit of detail about what local revenue actually means.
Kirk, can you unmute?
Madam Chair, I I finally solved my technology issue. Thank you. Uh, state and local revenue were combined. That's our chapter seventy money. Uh, Pat, do you want to talk about other streams of revenue, please?
Sure, would also be um regional transportation, Medicaid revenue, investment income, um any E and D that we use as a revenue source for the um the budget, charter school reimbursement, and just other miscellaneous revenue.
Would those be grants too, Pat?
No.
Uh, and sorry, I'm sorry, one more follow-up question. Where where would grants fall and how would they be categorized?
So they're outside of the budget. Uh oftentimes, like with our entitlement grants, uh that's why I was recommending the shifting of of taking M T R S personnel out of those grants because we lose uh M T R S contribution of those grants. So they are in addition to because most of those grants have a provision to them that are uh the supplement, not supplant provisions, meaning that they have to be in addition to what the typical uh programming is for the school system. So they're just not included in that at all.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this? Yeah, Rich.
I just wanted to reiterate what Mike said. I think this is excellent. I think uh the people in our communities will like this granularity and have better understanding and it will foster a better relationship. So kudos.
But this gives a good uh this helps us understand why Stowe's contribution has been, even though it's larger, it's the largest contribution, it's a declining contribution, right?
Yeah. So what I what I'm hoping for, Madam Chair, is that when I come back to you uh in two weeks for the next school committee meeting, that our revenue streams will be more certain, and I'll be able to show uh these types of tables to you based on the FY twenty-three dollars. So that we're prepared ultimately for our uh March second uh budget hearing.
Right. So if, you know, so we don't know what our revenue is. So the town assessments, this is kind of you, this is your estimate, but we're just not sure yet.
Yeah, we'll get that. We we have late word. Uh, the budget uh was presented by the governor today. So as we dive into uh that budget and get the firm numbers there, uh we'll be updating those as quickly as possible. We'll memorialize that in a memo. Um, I'll advise the school committee that I I won't wait to send that memo. I will send it to the committee with the understanding that we don't deliberate until we reach the meeting, but we'll include it in the meeting uh packet for February, February ninth, Madam Chair. Is that correct?
I think so, yeah. Steve, go ahead. You're muted, Steve.
I'm sorry, your comment just now. Uh, Stowe's contribution has remained relatively steady vis a vis the other uh two towns uh growing. So that's why our um our our level of growth has been smaller than the other two towns over the last couple of budgets. And um eventually, they're with their development, they'll probably end up catching up because um their 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 enrollment is is growing faster than Stowe. Stowe's has actually been down for the last seven years, I I think, Kirk, you said, and um and so that it's it's a it's a relativity and uh we're we're holding steady and the other towns are growing.
So as we talked about the wealth factor and the ability to pay, a simple way to think about this is when a farmer sells off maybe that little corner spot of land on their property and somebody comes in and builds a million-dollar home on it, you would dramatically increase the wealth of that little piece of property. And so then, over time, the aggregates of that add up for a town. And so we've seen more of that in the last four to five years in the towns of Lancaster and Bolton than we have in Stowe. But to Mr. Rubenstein's point, we know that there's some building on the horizon for Stowe uh and some changing economic times there. So this is a dynamic, and I suspect that if you followed it over a course of fifty years, you would sort of see these lines sort of wave up and down, and these are the periods that we're on because we're we're looking at the immediacy of it. I share it with you again for clarity because I our communities have questions about this. I know our finance people do. I am meeting uh I'm having a meeting with our finance chairs uh tomorrow, and I'm having a meeting with our town administrators on Monday. So I will be appraising them of all this information as well as I develop partnerships with them to communicate it to our greater community ultimately to present to them at town meeting.
Any other questions on this part? Yeah, Amy.
Thanks. So I'm looking at slide number ninety-two. Is that the it's um it's a summary of the total assessments of the three towns, and it gives a five-year history. Is that the slide that you're gonna be adding the projected assessments to, Kirk? Or is there a slide already that shows the fiscal twenty fiscal year twenty-three total assessments project?
No, as we discussed, uh I I did the other day, but missed calling those numbers since we don't have the determined chapter seventy, health insurance finalized, regional transportation, all those revenue streams. It would be perfunctory to do that at this time. I I I just, so that's what's gonna be coming to you on the ninth. We think we should have a better look at that.
Okay, that's what I was just.
Oh, and those percentages will be coming down.
Any other questions? Amy, did you want to follow up?
Um, maybe just on the last statement that the percentages would be coming down, just for clarification.
What I will continue to do is add my updates to that slide deck. Because what's gonna be important for us as we ultimately go out to vote a budget is that the members of this committee can walk the budget and talk the budget. And so it'll be memorialized in this singular presentation, and I will earmark it with a date slide so that you can track those updates uh with with each school committee meeting.
To move to teaching and learning right now, but did you want to be specific about the DC trips?
I thought we just did that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss it?
Yeah, I'll just repeat that this year uh we are not doing out-of-state travel and overnight stays, but that we have instructed our principals to start planning those trips for next year because we're getting the signals that we can begin to start to do that. And we will uh be exploring day trips, those in-state, those uh local field trip opportunities at our schools as well.
Thank you.
For this spring.
Right. So I would just like to say on the DC trip, um, as a mom of an eighth grader, I completely sympathize with everybody who feels the loss of this. It's and for our freshmen and our sophomores too, who also didn't get this kind of really important rite of passage. Uh, it is dreadful and nobody wants the wants it to be this way. So uh I totally sympathize with anybody out there who's feeling the burn there. So that's to be. So let's move on to teaching and learning, Amy. Yeah.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Um, just a couple of items this evening. Um, just uh rehash and review of our early release day on Friday, January fourteenth. We also have an early release day next Friday, February fourth. They will both and they're both district-based early release days for all of our faculty and staff. Uh, we continue with the train the trainer model for our social emotional learning competencies for teachers um and using them in their classrooms to implement with students. That's been the the ongoing focus of the year um aligning with Castle, the collaborative for academic and social emotional learning. Um, our faculty and staff continue to work together and collaboratively that they're designing lessons, they're routinely routinely planning for how they're using those approaches in their classrooms. And ultimately, the end goal is to have a variety of units developed with these S E L competencies um within these units to be using within their classrooms and aligning with our district improvement plan. So that will also be the work moving forward in February. And then um really gearing up for our March Professional Development Day on March eighteenth. Um, that topic and title has been um fully vetted, and so this year's title for our March PD Day is Elevating Voice and Embracing Equity. And the strands associated with that will be culturally responsive pedagogy. Uh, we're centering equity and social justice, safe and inclusive learning environments, and integration integrating social justice and social emotional learning with academic instruction. So we're really excited about that day. That's right around the corner. So I'll highlight the variety of workshops that they're that we're gonna be offering um at our next meeting. Um, and then the work around civic action plans, um the twenty-eighteen History and Social Science Frameworks, which I've linked into the report for you along with the chapter two ninety-six, the Act to Promote and Enhance Civic Engagement, which I've also linked in the report for you, has renewed the civic mission of history and social science education in Massachusetts under those new frameworks that were brought forward in twenty-eighteen. The goal is to prepare students to be thoughtful and active citizens. Um, student-led civics projects are supporting the development of not only civic knowledge, but their civic skills as well as their dispositions that are necessary for informed civic participation. Um, the product of chapter two ninety-six um are that student-led civics projects are meant to give students a chance to apply all of this knowledge um in their K through eight study of history and social science, but also in their high school years, high school years as well. So the goal is for students to complete the real work of an engaged, informed participant in a democracy by identifying issues and advocating for change in their communities. An example there might be that students identify a substance abuse problem as an issue in their community and research that, um decide to advocate and create a meaningful drug prevention program, say, in their school as just one example. So all students in the Neshoba Regional School District um have been and are going to be engaged in a nonpartisan student-led civics project in grade eight and then again during grade eleven. So the goal there is to really promote some of that work under the frameworks in grade eight in the middle school through a civics-led project, and then really allow them some independence in high school um to create yet another one. Completing that civic action project is a required component of our high school social studies curriculum. Um, I've also met with the principal, Dr. Boynton, at the high school, and you should see that reflected in the program of studies for next year when that is brought forward to you this spring. All projects are embodying the defining characteristics in the six stages that are described in the Civics Project um guidebook, which I've also linked for you there. But just to highlight, those six stages are um helping students to examine their self and their civic identity. The second is to identifying an issue of interest. The third is to research and investigate that issue. The fourth is to developing to develop an action plan. The fifth is to take action, and then the final step is uh reflection and showcasing the work. So what I've done is I've linked that guidebook there for you. Uh, and I've also linked the Neshoba Regional School District Civic Action Plan Guidebook there as well. There's a variety of samples of um projects in there and just um an overview for our teachers and our communities that are located in that plan, and we'll also link that to the Social Studies Department webpage as well as um the district website. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thanks, Todd.
You're welcome.
Any questions on teaching and learning update? All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. So I think that does it for the superintendent update. Thanks, Kirk, and thanks, Todd. We're gonna move on to new business and the first item here, uh and this is just for information only. This is kind of our first reading of the school year twenty-twenty-two twenty-twenty-three calendar. So Kirk, what should we know here?
Uh, yeah, so in front of you is the calendar, and so I know our calendar committee uh met here. And so you'll see the dates. Uh, these dates are walked over that are reflective of previous calendars, but for more specifics, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Anne Marie Stoico, who can speak to you.
Thanks, Kirk. Thank you for the opportunity to present the draft twenty-two, twenty-three school year calendar for your consideration. I was thinking that the last time I presented a calendar uh was when we were trying to make an adjustment to make sure that Cohort A and Cohort B had this an equal number of in-person instruction days, and it kind of made me think that, first of all, that seems like like a lifetime ago. And secondly, how this the pandemic history uh has unfolded and evolved. I'd like to start, as I do each time, by thanking the members of the Superintendent's Advisory Committee on the school calendar. The parents, teachers, and staff members have mostly all served for multiple years, and I'm very grateful to them for that. I'd like to thank parents Jocelyn Jasreb, Jessica Gale, Stacy Kramer, and Melissa Carlson. Also, teachers Kim Bolus, Michelle Kelly, Moira LaPointe, Karen Premiano, and Jody Speck. And staff members, Dr. Todd McGuire, principals Sean O'Shea and Dr. Kate Boynton, assistant principals, doctors Mark Levine and Caitlin Angulo, and information systems coordinator Kathy Leonardi. I'd also like to thank the town clerks and our member of communities who are so helpful with the identification of voting days, and they're always so kind and patient with my million questions. Thanks to Pam Powell in Bolton, Lisa Johnson, in Lancaster, and Linda Hathaway in Stowe. And lastly, as always, many, many thanks to Alita, who takes the notes, the chicken scratch notes with my colored pencil markings and turns them into the a professional the chicken scratch notes with my colored pencil markings and turns them into the a professional-looking color-coded document that you see before you. The draft I'm presenting tonight is for twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, the most the most recent pre-pandemic year, we had planned to do two years of calendar um ahead. My medical absence slowed us down just a little bit, so we decided we wanted to get this calendar before you as soon as possible, so that when it's finalized and voted upon, families and staff can start making their plans. But shortly after that, we'll start with a twenty-three, twenty-four calendar and get that to you because people really seem to appreciate having as much as much advance on that as possible. So here we go. Um, our committee does its work under School Committee Policy, ICICA, um which says that the goal is to present present you a calendar that says um for the information of the staff and students and parents, um what day school will be in. And it set forth the days of school, the days of holidays, vacation periods, in-service days, and conferences. So that's that's our task, and that's what we have before you. We're proposing that the start of the school year be as early as the um as the NREA contract allows, which would be Monday and Tuesday for full-day professional development days for the staff, August twenty-nine and thirty. That would have the first day for students on Wednesday, August thirty-first. So they would have three full days of school before the long um long Labor Day weekend. So we head to November, the um the fall parent-teacher conferences will be on an early release day on November seventh for the evening conferences and a full day on November eighth. November eighth is also a voting day, which means the high school and center school will be used as polling places. High school, it's no problem. There will be no students. There'll be plenty of parking. That's fine. We have, but we had a holiday that week, so we didn't want to have a separate day off for the for the full-day conferences and for the voting, because that would have been a three-day uh it would have been a two-day week with three days off. Um, we believe that we can do this uh because we're going to be offering the option again for parents um to participate in their conferences virtually. It seems to be very popular with the parents, and it will cut down with the parking issues that we have in center. Principal Mel Karen thinks that we will be able to pull that off with a little bit of effort, and we think we can make it work. Our town clerks say that there may be another voting day in September. There was supposed to be a voting day on September twentieth. But um it appears that the state has pulled that back, and it's not yet been rescheduled. If it's rescheduled for September, we'll need to come to you perhaps with an adjustment for the calendar. But it's also possible, they say, that it will be rescheduled for August. Which could be delightful, but we just don't know the answer to that yet. We're going to have early release days for for professional development. We resolve the issue of the Wednesday, Friday issue that plagued us for several years. There are Fridays, and there are seven in September, October, December, January, February, April, and May. Those are the red days. The March Full Day Professional Development Day will be on March seventeenth. And also, there are two days in March for um parent-teacher conferences. Uh, March second, just pre-K to eight, March second to Thursday in the evening and March tenth in the afternoons, and that's on a Friday. There are six high school late starts, the light purple days for professional development, and then several more surrounding the midterm exams and the final exams. February and April vacations, as always, are tied to the Monday holidays, and those are the so you'll see a green Monday and then the like the kind of dark, the mustard yellow um rest of the week for those vacations. Summer in January may require some explanation because of the Christmas and New Year's holidays are on fall on weekends. We will, as is our custom, have no school on Friday, the twenty-third of December. And then with a combination of vacation and holiday days. Basically, our winter break will start on that Friday, December twenty-third. And we will return to school on January third, which is the Tuesday the week later. That tracks what we did in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, when the holidays, when the days of the week fell similar, um and it accommodates both the legal holidays and also the holidays that we have um in our contracts with our Unit C, with our Unit C staff. Last day of school for the seniors will be on May thirtieth, and Happy Day Graduation of the class of twenty twenty-three will be on June eleventh, and that will be at Mechanics Hall. The last day of school for all the other students will be on June fifteenth. If there's no snow and if there's five snow days, which we have to accommodate in the calendar, then that would bring it to June twenty-third. On the uh the right-hand side, the high school first quarter, second quarter, third quarter ends. Um, we'll likely have those days available. We have for the next reading and for the vote, we need to do our we need to do our counting uh to fill to fill those days in. So there we go. Any questions that I can answer for you?
I I don't know if you can see my hand, but I have it up.
I can't. Good gracious, I'm sorry, neglecting my duty. Go ahead, Amy.
That's okay. Uh, thank you so much for for the detailed explanation on this, Anne Marie. Um, just uh one comment and a question. Um, the question is, I think it's our practice to have an early release on the last day of school at the elementary schools. Is there is there a reason why we don't show that on this version of the calendar? Because that that has been like an area of confusion for me uh in the past.
Thank you for that question, because I thought the same thing. And I wondered if I'm if I'm remembering correctly that there's a um um or if I'm thinking from another district perhaps, that there's a magnanimous magnanimous vote from the school committee to make that last day a half day um as we get earlier and, you know, great celebration. But I I don't recall that clearly, but I believe that you're correct, that the last day of school is a half a day.
Yeah, so.
I don't know the answer to that. We could maybe look at the archives and see what we've done to make that happen. I'm not recalling.
I think it just happens. So.
It just happens, yeah.
So I just I just feel like consistency purposes, it should be reflected on this calendar.
Correct.
Yeah, we can put that in. My big fear, if you look at June, um the new holiday, Juneteenth June is is on the nineteenth, of course, and uh and that's a Monday. So if there are snow days, depending on how many there are, we could be set up in the situation where we would have a long weekend and then return for a half day last day of school on Tuesday. I was going to suggest to the superintendent, if it looks like that's going to happen, he might want to call a snow day, even if it's ninety degrees in the shade out there. Avoid just to avoid that uh that result, because that would be weird.
That would be really weird.
All right, there was a question too, maybe?
Oh, I was wondering if it would also be possible to highlight the first and last day with like a some kind of symbol, just to make this as user-friendly for parents as possible.
For the students you're talking about, Amy?
For students, yes, thank you. Um, like with this, these are so minute, but it really does help when you're looking at the calendar, like have a square around the first day or the last day. Those are those are my only comments. Otherwise, um, thank you for all the, you know, the thought you've put into this.
Thank you, Amy.
Any other questions or uh comments, feedback? Keep uh letting the community know. This is a draft. We're just viewing this for the first time. We're probably going to vote on this at our next meeting. And so, you know, people can feel free to ponder this a little bit. Feedback can come through email. Anybody have any other concerns, thoughts?
Mia, what's the timeframe on comments or feedback on this? Will we be taking a vote in two weeks or?
So we it we can put it on the agenda to vote the next time around. Um, but if we find that there's a lot of, you know, concern or things come to our attention that we're not clear on, we could um make it just a discussion next time and vote in the meeting after. Anne Marie, is there kind of a time-sensitive nature to this?
Not really a time-sensitive nature, only that, you know. Of course, nobody's been on vacation in two years, right? So that as soon as it's voted on, then people can start making tentative plans, but um the sun will still rise if it takes another vote, if it takes another meeting after that, I suspect.
Great. All right, everybody. So uh there it is. Um. I feel like uh we had one other issue with our calendar that uh Dear J is going to kind of bring up. And so Sharon, maybe we can wait to to converse about that until your report. Is that okay?
Yes, I was just thinking about that and thinking I'd just give you a preview of things to come that Dear J um has uh some thoughts to put out there about the calendar.
Great. So we'll wait with bated breath on that. Um, so let's move on now to our next matter of new business. And that is our special education update. I turn it over to Joan Tangelis now.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thanks for having me back. It seems like I just saw you recently. Um, I do have a slide. I don't know if Alita can put that slide up, but um I really wanted to talk to you a little bit about the upcoming coordinated program review, and I'd like to rewind the tape a little with history. Because, believe it or not, um on March fifth of twenty twenty, the Department of Elementary um and Secondary Ed were on-site evaluating our program for special ed and civil rights. Uh, I never got to publicly report on that, because as you know, one week later, the district was then closed. So um, you know, historically, what happens is we're on a six-year cycle, and there's a mid-cycle review that happens three years in. So in twenty nineteen, because the district is a tier-one district, and that should say districts with no or low risk. Um, we do a self-assessment on standards that they produce for us. So there were thirty-two special ed standards and three civil rights standards um that we self-assessed on. Um, and they also looked at our indicated data, indicator eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Those um indicator points, uh indicator eleven is for testing timelines met for initial evaluations once parental consent is received. Indicator twelve data is um early childhood data for students that are referred to us prior to their third birthday that we have an IEP developed for them beforehand. Um, and indicator thirteen is students that are fourteen years of age and above that there are appropriate post-secondary goals and that fourteen-year-olds are um invited to team meetings. Um, and there are annual goals related to the students' transitions. So back in twenty twenty, um very positive results. We had a fully implemented um tiered focused monitoring. Um, we were in full compliance in all of our indicated data. So that's really positive news. Um, we are now, believe it or not, two years later, coming up on our mid-cycle. So this year starts our self-assessment. Um, and we have been asked to review ten special ed standards and eighteen civil rights standards that we'll be submitting to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. And then they will come on site in twenty twenty-three at an identified time. Um, so typically, what happens is um in the mid-cycle, um they look at our cohort data in the following areas that you can see on this slide. So they look at five-year cohort graduation rates for students with disabilities, annual dropout rates for students with disabilities, public school monitoring and special ed compliance data, problem resolution system, special ed compliant data, performance on special ed, state performance plan, and annual performance performance report and indicator data. And they look at data and findings of significant disproportionality. So the district um was found that we met all of those standards. So that's another positive result, because um we will not have to do a self-assessment on seventeen special ed um targeted standards or eight civil rights targeted standards, because their review of our district is we have met um the criteria in all of those areas. Um, so, you know, all, you know, positive, we are working really hard as the district. Uh, PPS has experienced tremendous changes, obviously, during the pandemic. Um, to get these positive results um out in front of you during a very difficult time of trying to educate our students uh with special needs has been quite challenging, but I can't say enough about the department and the faculty, how committed and caring they are to, you know, they've gone above and beyond to support every student and make sure that we are compliant in these areas. So we'll be working on the self-assessment. Um, and Dr. McGuire and I will be chipping away at the self-assessment together. I think we'll be spending some time together. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thanks, Joan. What questions might you have? Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. Thanks, Joan, for presenting this. Um, I'm wondering if um this um evaluation was like a standards-based evaluation, or it's like approaching the standard hmm uh but not not yet met the standard, approaching the standard, met the standard or the targeted standards? And if and if that's the case, was meeting the targeted standard sort of the the highest level of achievement for a district, or was there something beyond that?
So they actually do have standards. Um, it's either not implemented, partially implemented, implementation in progress, implemented, or commendable. So that's how it's scored.
So where does where does met the requirement, is that that part of the stand, one of the standards?
Um, so met the requirement is a compliance um issue. So if you look at the indicated data, you're either compliant or non-compliant. So what they do is when they look at each of the criteria across special ed, they will mark whether they're met or not, and then they will, that will indicate whether we are compliant. Um, and that we have fully implemented each of the standards.
Got it. So I'm sorry, the first list of standards that you gave me, can you just read those off again for me?
Sure, not implemented, partially implemented, implementation in progress, or implemented or commendable.
So were we on the higher end for any of those? Um, like was was? I I guess I'm not seeing any of those on here unless I'm not.
Okay, so what they do is when they look at each of the criteria, they're looking against, have you met the criteria based on when they're on site? They're actually looking at student records to see if you've met each of the criteria. So they call it met. And then when they put out the report, they tell you, have you fully implemented each area of the criteria?
I see. So this is sort of partway through this process then?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, okay. So we're where we need to be at this point.
Right. So we have no corrective action right now, and we will start our next self-assessment um this year. And they'll be on-site next year to review student records. They'll be walking through buildings and doing interviews with staff members.
Great. Thank you for clearing that up for me.
No problem.
Joan, I noticed that there were different standards and indicators last time versus this time. They're asking you to address different ones this upcoming time. Is that typical that they kind of switch this up on you, or is this like determined based upon their observations?
No, this is very typical. So they have like a Group A, and they look at Group A's standards. And then what they do in three years is they want to look at another set of standards. They want to make sure that you're meeting, you know, all the criteria as set forth in the regulations.
They just don't make you do it all at the same time, because it's so much.
It's a lot, right?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Karen.
Um, Joan, I'm just curious for the the visits. I know you said they interview staff. They also interview, they could interview parents as well, correct?
They do. So at the um, they will actually do an onsite training, and they did that in before they came to the visit in twenty twenty, where they actually meet with the parents and they talk about what happens at the coordinated program review. And then they will ask for, you know, parent interviews, and they do send out parent surveys as well.
So those surveys go out to any parent that's in receiving services through Neshoba, and then if they, based on those responses, some people may end up being interviewed. Is that how it?
So they take all the survey data, um but they also look for parents to interview, and they offer interview times for them as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. So this is good news. Thanks, Joan.
Thanks.
All right, and I think that that concludes our special education update. We are now going to move over um to hold a vote to kind of uh create a date for our budget hearing. And we are recommending that the budget hearing, which is mandated by state law, be held on March second, two thousand and twenty-two. And uh that would then be followed by a normal school committee meeting during which the school committee could, based upon what happened at the hearing, begin uh or open up a deliberation. So, Mike, perhaps we can, oh, go ahead, Mike.
Quick question. So we're proposing to have the budget hearing at 6:30. I'm just making sure that this isn't sort of like executive session where we put something, we sort of front-load it, and then we reach the 6:30 mark at our regular school committee time? Is this what we intended to do?
I think that we intended to start the hearing at 6:30. We normally assume, and correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, that it would, you would engage in a bit of a presentation. It would then be opened up to public question. And it would normally last around thirty minutes. I think it lasted about two minutes last year.
So the, the, the hearing is just that. It's a public hearing of presentation of the budget, and then for questions. But during the hearing, is, there are no deliberations during the hearing, just questions. So then you would close the hearing, open school committee, and then the chair would open that agenda item, and deliberations can then begin in that function.
Because the vote on the budget is at the following meeting on March 9th. Correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
Does that answer your question, Mike?
It does. Yep, totally.
So do we want to start with the motion, perhaps, and then we can deliberate or discuss?
Sure. I'll move to hold the FY23 budget public hearing at 6:30 PM on March 2nd, 2022. At the conclusion of the hearing, the school committee will hold a regular meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Rich. Discussion, I think I see Steve's hand.
Yes. The 2nd of February is not a regular school meeting night, is that correct?
A 2nd of March, you mean?
No, I'm saying the 2nd, the 2nd of March is the same thing as the 2nd of February, so.
So it's not a regularly scheduled school committee meeting, no.
Why don't we have our regular meeting on the 9th?
So that's the night that we're going to actually vote. And so we thought it would be prudent to, we didn't do this last year, where we didn't have an opportunity as a committee to kind of deliberate prior to the vote and after the hearing. And so we thought that, you know, we would hold the hearing, and then we would have a little bit of time to deliberate as a committee. And then at the regularly scheduled school committee meeting on the 9th, we would vote on the budget. So that's what the motion is for.
May I add one more piece of color?
Of course.
And that is because by the regional agreement, we need to do that by March 15th.
Vote the budget. Any other questions or discussion on whether or not to set this date and time? Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, I think that timing makes sense, but as I was checking my calendar, I saw that March 2nd is Ash Wednesday. Somebody else should verify that. And I don't know how much of an issue that is, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
I have confirmed that via Google. The Google has told me that is true. And so discussion can continue around this. Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On the Ash Wednesday matter, I would defer to even the Stoica or Dr. McCarthy for theological determination on that. But I don't believe that we are prohibited from participating in a public hearing on, on Ash Wednesday. But I'll leave that to Dr. McCarthy. The one thing I'm just going to add, as far as the second is concerned, I just, it's just for clarification for anybody who might be listening, that you're going to have a public hearing on the budget, and then we're going to close the public hearing and then go into deliberations on the budget at that point. But when you said it's going to be a regular school committee meeting, I assume it's just going to be a one-item agenda, right? So people may get the misunderstanding, we're going to have a second meeting on the 9th. But it's just going to be a, it's actually going to be a public hearing, and then we'll close the public portion, the public comment session of it, and continue with our deliberations in accordance with the public hearing statute, so.
And keeping in mind that we don't have two meetings in February, so I think that a little bit of that was taken into consideration, too. Go ahead, Mary.
So on Ash Wednesday, there could be services, Ash Wednesday services or a mass in the evening for people who couldn't receive ashes earlier in the afternoon. And I, I think, you know, that we, in deference to our brothers and sisters of other faiths, we've been careful. And, and so it's just, it seems to me that that might not be the best date to have something. And, but Joe is correct. There's no reason not to have a public meeting. And that's the meeting, you know, if people can have their ashes, then we walk around and everyone says, ooh, do I, should I say something? That there's some like funny mark on, on her forehead, and then they say, then they see somebody else, and they say, oh, I think it must be, it must be Ash Wednesday. The other point is, by the regional contract, I'm looking, I don't have all that stuff right here, but the hearing on the budget has to be by March 15th. The hearing, the hearing on the budget, not the vote on the budget. And so, I mean, I'd just like to look into that, and maybe we could look at the state and think about it, and maybe not vote on it right now. Anyway, so between Ash Wednesday, and it's, and see, Ash Wednesday isn't the kind of thing you can do by Zoom. Did, you know, you just can't. I mean, I, I guess you could, or do you, but, so you do have to go and get the ashes. And by March, many people might be able to go into churches again. Many people are, and some people aren't. So I would advocate to not have it on March 2nd, but let's, we could certainly talk about this, but I would rather that we didn't vote on this in deference to, by Catholic faith.
Thanks, Mary. Any other comments? Kirk, can you clarify? Mass general law also has some deadlines around submitting budgets, doesn't it?
Yeah. So the March 15th date is what we are looking for there. So let me get some clarification. I would hate to misspeak because I don't have it in front of me at the 2nd.
I have it up if you want me to. We have to adopt a budget by March 15th.
Where do you find that, Alita?
It's on the regional agreement, right on our, underneath the school committee. Adopt a budget, which means voted by the 15th.
Okay.
I know, Mary. I don't know why that's not squaring, but.
I will, uh, there's that section right there.
Oh, thanks.
So, so the operative word there is adopt a budget, correct?
Yeah. Steve, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I had found that in the regional agreement, and it is a, it is there because of a Massachusetts general law, that the budget must be adopted by the 15th.
Yeah.
Adopted means approved. I mean, that, we have to say yes to the budget by the 15th of March.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Go ahead, Joe. Deboos, Joe?
Oh, no, I was just, Steve sold my thunder. Yeah, I mean, we're, we have to have an approved budget, a voter on approved budget by March 15th, the Ides of March.
Ah, okay. So, you know, discussion is continuing on this motion. I'm hearing the Ash Wednesday comments. I know we love Wednesdays, but we could perhaps move to a different day of that week, maybe the, the 3rd, which is a Thursday? Any discussion on a different day that week? Or reasons why we shouldn't?
I mean, I'd be in favor of moving it because the idea of a public hearing is to encourage public participation. So I really wouldn't be a fan of schedule on a day that presents a conflict for, you know, a known minority or just any group of people. So I think, you know, March 3rd would make a lot of sense to me.
Am I hearing any concerns about March 3rd? This is like, with regard to town government meetings, what do we know about our FinCon meetings slash, Amy?
March 3rd is parent-teacher conferences.
Ah, thank you. Okay. March 2nd, or excuse me, March 1st? It's a Tuesday?
May I?
Yeah, of course.
If, if we, if we hunt for the day where there's no conflicts, we will not have a hearing. The, I do know that Stowe Town Government typically operates on Tuesdays. I don't know about that particular Tuesday. So, you know, I might recommend that we advance forward with the 3rd, particularly since with our parent-teacher conferences. One of the benefits that, that this moment brought to us is that having hybrid or having virtual conferences through Zoom have been greatly beneficial from what our community has told us. So I don't know how much that would provide interference that evening.
Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Nobody wants to hear about my own history, but I will say that my former community of Andover used to have its town elections on a Monday, and they finally smartened up and said, we got to move this to Tuesday because everybody thinks of Election Day as a Tuesday. So I would, I would apply the same logic to our community, and with due respect to Dr. McCarthy, also being of the Catholic faith, I don't think we are precluded from actually holding the public hearing on the 2nd, if they're, participating, if you're a Roman Catholic. And I would therefore move that we have the public hearing for the budget on March 2nd, 2022, at 6:30 PM.
Second.
So I appreciate that. I think the motion is already on the floor and seconded for the 2nd, for March 2nd.
Oh, I apologize.
No worries. That's okay. So no need, but, um, I think that the conversation is whether or not we want to hold it on Ash Wednesday now. Mary, go ahead. My friend. Say, go ahead.
I got, I got moved around. I tried to unmute other people. So if a public hearing is for the public, it's not just a question of us, it's for the public. And, and I would just say that, you know, if, if I had known that this was, this was not on the original calendar, if I had known that it was Ash Wednesday, I would have brought this up. We have brought up other holidays, and we honor them. And, and, you know, this isn't, you know, who's Catholic and, and against, you know, I'm Catholic and you're Catholic, and so that like negates this. This goes along with, we, we honor the Jewish holidays, and I certainly want that to continue. And, but it, I just, I don't think we are acting fairly in terms of a major religious holiday. Not, and you might not think it's a holiday, but it's a day of remembrance. And, and so, let's say somebody is going to go to a service. You know, what are they going to do? They're going to go, I can't believe we even have to talk about this. I just don't think it is appropriate to have it on, on Ash Wednesday, and I think that I have good reason to say this. And I would like us to either not vote on this, or we vote, and we see. But it's not fair. It's not equitable.
I'm going to weigh in and say that I agree with you, Mary. I think it was an oversight on our part, and we shouldn't have it on Ash Wednesday. That's my opinion. But Mike, go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, this, to me, this is a no-brainer. This just has to be respectful to all faiths, all creeds. I mean, I don't celebrate Ash Wednesday, but if this were on a Jewish holiday, Yom Kippur, I'd say, thanks, but no thanks. Let's move it to a different date. I don't, I don't know why this is even an issue.
Okay. And any further discussion? Because we can take a vote. All right, let's vote on the Wednesday date. So Mike?
No, thank you.
Myself, no. Rich?
No.
Joe?
Yes.
Sharon?
No.
Mary?
No.
Karen?
No.
Brett?
No.
Amy?
No.
Steve?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion fails. Alita, what was the number, if you don't mind?
Seven no's, four yeses. I believe there were Rich, Joe, Steve, and Sean.
I voted, I voted no, Alita.
Oh, okay.
Thanks so much, guys.
All right, then it's three to eight.
Thank you, Alita. Okay, so the, that date is off the table. Would somebody like to make a motion for a different date?
Did we agree that Thursday was an available day despite the fact that it is parent-teacher conferences? I've gotten confused about which days are available and which days are not.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what Kirk said to be that. I tend to agree. I think we're not going to find a date where there's zero conflicts, and that parent-teacher conferences can be scheduled around it, are short, are virtual, can be squeezed in. I actually move in, or excuse me, I am relatively confident that the 3rd could work. Go ahead, Steve.
My question is, if the Select Board in Stowe meets on Tuesday night, that really has no bearing upon our, having a public hearing. They've already been pretty much briefed on our, on our upcoming budget, both by their FinCons and by Superintendent Downing. So I don't see any objection to having it on Tuesday night, the 1st.
Kirk, you think that's pretty accurate?
I think that's 100% accurate.
Because you've done so much legwork with our town government leaders. They're pretty aware.
Yes, I believe so. And I've had these experiences in the past, and when that's been the case, representatives have come to brief their boards later.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to hold the FY23 budget hearing at 6:30 PM on March 1st, 2022. At the conclusion of the hearing, the school committee will hold a regular one-agenda item meeting. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Well, I think I saw Amy first. So thanks, Amy. Any discussion on holding this on March 1st? All right, let's vote. Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Rich?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Steve?
Yeah.
Sean? I think Sean said yes. Motion passes. Thanks, everybody. So we know when the budget hearing will be. So you guys can put that on your calendars. Thanks for that additional time out of your life. We're going to move on to our next matter here, and that is Director of Business and Operations Report. So off to Pat.
Thank you. First of all, I want to bring forward a letter from Starros Andropos from the high school. He is the the person who assists the kids in the DECA program at the high school. And he has received a donation in the amount of $2,500 from the Clinton Savings Bank, and it's specifically for the DECA program. They donate to defray costs associated with attending competitions. And DECA has grown to 210 members this year, and the costs have grown exponentially along with the membership due to COVID and rising prices. So I would like you to vote tonight on that, to accept that donation, a very generous donation.
Fantastic. Thanks so much, Pat. This is, this is terrific, and we thank Clinton Savings Bank for thinking of our group here. What a great group. Mike, do you have a motion for us on this?
Yes, of course I do. I move to accept a donation in the amount of $2,500 from Clinton Savings Bank to Nishoba, DECA, to defray costs associated with attending competition. DECA to defray costs associated with attending competitions.
I will second that. Do we have any discussion? All right, doesn't look like we do. Uh, Kirk?
Just real quick, Madam Chair, uh, I would like to know that, what a successful program. We spoke to this before. A couple of our teams have advanced past states as they have performed very, very well. And I received uh, that notice from some of our students this week. So I just wanted to let the community know that we have an outstanding DECA program. And uh, uh, led by Stavros and his students are doing fantastically well. So congratulations to them.
It's awesome. Congratulations for sure. Uh, so let's vote. I vote yes. Mike?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
Fantastic. Motion passes and we are so grateful. Go DECA! So our next matter here.
That would be results of operations.
Fantastic. Thanks, Pat. Take it away.
I'm gonna share my screen. Um, this is the December results of operations. Um, as you can see, there are a few changes that have um, come up in comparison to last month's. We um, during the budget process, uh Superintendent Downing and myself looked at some of our grant funding and we made some changes in regards to staffing. And I think that we spoke about that during the um, budget workshop. Uh, so you'll see some changes in our results of operations because some of those salaries that we had originally put into our S R three grant are now back in the budget. So um, I'll just step to the top. The utility costs uh, continue to plague this year's budget. Um, the costs have gone up considerably and we um, are hoping that maybe the cold weather will kind of settle down, get a little warmer, and maybe it won't be as bad as we may expect. Um, and that would be affecting our facilities department budget. Um, the number two item is um, the changes in enrollment for out of district tuitions. We have had some students that have come back into the district for programs we had originally budgeted to go out. And we have also had um, some students um, no longer be in out of district placements. Again, this particular line of the budget is a volatile line and could change to the good or bad at any point in time. And again, number three or four are the two schools affected by those grant funding changes. And then the first one would be the high school and the other one would be the Florence Sawyer School. So does anybody have any questions about December?
I'm seeing none. Oh, I see Steve's hand.
I, I just wanted to mention that uh, the operations report was discussed uh, at our meeting on Monday. And um, we are looking at the possibility of having uh, more line item explanations, uh, more, more in depth perhaps. And also looking at perhaps putting in some historical information, for example, this month, last year, kind of thing. So there can be a, a, a tracking of the uh, the uh, year-to-year expenses in certain line items.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, Amy?
That sounds great. That, that would be super helpful. Um, each time I look at this, I have to remind myself about the budget versus actual, because there's no total columns. I don't know if that's something that could be added going forward to, to just um help convey the information. But my question really was why there's no explanation on the um, health services line item? Cause that looks like it's over budget.
That would be, I, I believe I may have mentioned that at um, a previous uh, previous monthly report. Uh, I think uh, that's a position that was put into the budget um, to assist in the COVID-related um, issues that plagued the nurses, um, the testing and uh, all of that. So I just wanted to um, uh, that's all I can tell you about that. It's strictly staffing because most, she has very little other uh, line items in her budget.
That, that makes a lot of sense, right?
I, I actually can speak to that for just a moment. We, we have in our budget nine point five nurses. We have uh, another nursing position that is coded to the S R three grant and a point six nursing position that is coded uh, to one, to a nursing grant. Uh, our employee that works three days a week in that point six position during these moments of high extreme times, we have uh, had her working five days a week during those high moments. So that's where we are supplementing that, so.
Thanks, Kirk.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Any other questions? Doesn't look like it. So you can move on to your next item.
And my next?
Yeah.
That would be a budget update. Um, I don't have any other updates at this point in time. I'm still waiting for um, final numbers from the state. Um, they give us preliminary numbers during the year, but again, um, as far as like assessments and revenue, so we're in a pretty good place at this point and I'm hoping that um, we end the year on a positive note. Um, puts a little bit more money back into E and D, especially if we anticipate taking some of the money out, so. Looking good so far.
Great. Thanks, Pat.
You're welcome.
No shortage of budget information tonight, so that's great. Okay, so we're gonna move on to our next item. And I hope that Dan is ready, cause it is our student representative report.
I am ready. Thank you.
Great. Welcome, Dan.
Thanks. Uh, so basically, what's been going on at Meschoba is things are starting to settle down a bit and become more normal again. I remember last time we talked a bit about how uh, there is teachers out and students out on the regular. Classrooms are a little more empty. And now things, classrooms are starting to fill out a little bit more again and things are returning to normal, which is great. Um, we also, now that spectators are allowed at basketball games, we're trying to garner some more support, so sho- showing some school spirit there. Uh, I believe Stuko talked about some uh, doing some sort of uh, uh, I, I have to remember what it is. Um, give me a moment.
And Dan, I think just to be clear, Stuko is what you call your student council.
Yeah, I think, yeah. So they were talking about doing some sort of talent show, I think. I don't know the details. This is what Sonia told me, so uh, that's, that's all I got for you guys today.
Fantastic. Thanks so much, Dan. We appreciate you being here. Um, guys, just so that we are all kind of staying within the bounds, we want to make sure that we're relegating our, our um, questions to things that are in the student report. And if you have additional questions that are kind of outside of the student report and outside of our agenda, therefore, certainly pose them either through me to the superintendent or you can pose them to the superintendent now. Um, just with that little asterisk in place. Any questions for Dan? Go ahead, Kirk.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Dan publicly and Sonia as well. They are gonna participate in the Student Representative MASK workshop coming up here uh, in the next couple of weeks. So Dan, thank you for, for taking the opportunity to learn more about uh, the function of school committees and your role on this uh, uh, government committee. So um, this is a workshop put on by MASK. Thank you uh, Madam Chair for pointing that direction, but I, I'm happy our students can go.
As am I. Dan, do you think that you guys could perhaps provide uh, or share out what you learned from the conference?
From this conference in particular?
Well, the one that you're going to on, I think, January thirtieth or whatever it is?
Uh, you want me to report in the next meeting what I learned from it?
Yeah.
Uh, I think I could do that. Yeah.
Thanks, Dan. Any other questions, comments? All right, terrific. Thank you to our student representative. Uh, so on to unfinished business, we have two policy second readings to approve. And we can start with the, our first motion for the School Committee Legal Status Policy B B. Mike?
I move to approve the revisions to Policy B B, legal status as presented.
I'm gonna second that. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Rich?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Steve? I lost you, Steve.
I'm sorry, there's something else popped up on my screen. Uh, yes.
Thank you. Amy?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And Brett?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for that. Thank you to the Policy Subcommittee, bringing that forward. Let's move on to our next policy uh, second reading. This is Policy J F A A and it is the residency policy. Mike?
I'll move to approve the revisions to Policy J F A A residency as presented.
Second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Rich?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Steve? Yes, okay. Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
Terrific. That motion passes. We're gonna move now to our subcommittee uh, slash advisory reports and we'll start with Budget and Warrant. Steve, do you have anything new to share with us?
Yes, the Budget and Warrant Committee uh, met on Monday evening. First of all, we'd like to thank uh Superintendent Downing for the excellent presentation he made. It certainly impressed the two members of the uh, FinComs, the three town FinComs who were there, Brian Boyle from Bolton and uh, Dick Trussell from um, Lancaster. And uh, we'd like to thank him for that. Um, we also reviewed Policy D and we have found no significant uh differences with our current policies. So we would recommend at our next meeting that we approve uh, the M A S C Policy D changes that are necessary.
Great, thanks, Steve. Let's move over to Communications Subcommittee.
Um, we met on January thirteenth. And um, I think that my report is gonna be the same as last time. We, we did more work on a survey that we are developing that um, we are gonna go over with Kirk at our next meeting. Um, and then we hope to be able to issue that um, to the community at large to help us get some data on um, prioritizing the focus of our subcommittee.
Great, thanks, Amy. To the N R H S School Building Committee.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. The uh, Building Committee met on January eighteenth, at which time we were formally introduced to our new architect and designer Castle Booth Associates. Uh, in addition to that, the Committee voted on the all-important issue of establishing a date certain or a day certain per month regards to uh, our meetings. We're going to be meeting henceforth after February. Our next meeting is gonna be February eighth. But after that, we're going to be meeting on the third Tuesday of every month, excepting when those months where school calendar or school events may preclude us from meeting on that day. Uh, in addition to that, the Superintendent is actively engaged in the establishment of what he's deeming working committees. He's going to be utilizing some of the members of our committee as well as some of our administrators uh, to uh, engage with our designer and um uh, O P M uh, relative to the framing of the feasibility study. I would uh, at this time, Madam Chair, I'd like to just turn it over to Superintendent Downing briefly to discuss the visioning sessions with regards to uh, the faculty and staff that uh, has been planned for the district.
Uh, thank you, Attorney Gleason. Uh, so on the dates of February tenth, February eleventh, and February eighteenth, we will convene from eight thirty to three thirty P M at Wedgewood Country Club in Stowe, who gave us a very favorable uh, rate of five hundred dollars over three days to rent that room and um, for our visioning session so that we can have plenty of distance and be able to do that work in person. Um, our committee is made up of fifty-four individuals of which uh, twenty-seven of those individuals are administrators and staff members. Twenty-seven of those individuals are students, parents, and town officials. Uh, the construction of those groups was based on the recommended construction from uh, Dr. Frank Walker, who was our educational planner. So I use the template that he provided me uh, in terms of understanding what the, what, what the ratios are uh, for the working sessions. And we'll be working in nine groups, six, for a variety of topics over those three days that will ultimately inform the architectural team uh, of the educational uh, planning impact as part of the feasibility process. So it's a very exciting time for us.
Thank you, Superintendent. And Madam Chair, just to uh, finish up, um, one of their discussion at our meeting involved uh, when we would envision a time for some informational forum with regards to our constituents and the residents of our district. Um, right now, that um, I think originally for the committee's edification, it was, we would thought we may be doing this sometime in February, but right now, it's looking more like March to April, where we'll be going out to our community to engage them in some one-on-ones regarding the uh, actual building process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Exciting indeed. And it was a joy to meet our uh, architect. They're fantastic. So looking forward to more good stuff there. Uh, to Personnel, I am the chair of Personnel, and I will just share that Mary and I met this evening. We continued um, to talk a little bit about Superintendent Evaluation Timeline. And we're kind of on track for that. We are gonna find that the timeline is gonna trip past uh, the election date. And so um, we think that we can get the vast majority of the work done around Superintendent Evaluation before that um, before new members come aboard. Um, but more detail on that later. Just know that that is kind of well under control through Personnel. And I'll be meeting with Kirk just to kind of shore up those dates uh, next week. Uh, we can chat about that, Kirk. Uh, the next thing that um, Mary and I talked about this evening was bringing forth to the full committee um, as is required by our policy, new salary ranges for our uh, entire administrative team. And so um, we met, we talked about that. Everything looks good and we're gonna bring that to a future meeting. I think that's it for that. Let's move over to Policy.
Uh, nothing new to report. We have not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, so we'll report next time.
Thanks, Karen. Over to Audit Advisory. Rich, anything new there?
Yeah, we have a full slate of people now, or I guess we did. We just weren't, we were not aware that we, everybody was voted on, so we're gonna be scheduling a meeting soon.
Terrific. And Sharon, Dear J?
Yes, so Dear J has met um, I think two times uh, since our last meeting. They are um, were grateful for the feedback that they received from the committee um, during our last meeting and grateful also that um, the committee voted to uphold the um, policy that was um voted on in June of twenty twenty um, regarding racial justice. Um, they also have been working on um some updates or recommendations for updates for the calendar. It was, it is in relation to naming holidays currently on the calendar. Um, the, all the school closings simply say uh, school closing holiday. And they are um, have been working on uh, making some recommendations that we um can make a difference, um, send a message of equality and inclusion and um, welcome by naming those holidays on the calendar. And it's a simple change that can send a, a strong message. Um, and so I have um, just received this morning a list of um some of their suggestions regarding calendar changes and um, the rationale behind some of those changes. Since Since that is not something that was on the agenda, I'm thinking that the better choice rather than going into those specifics right now is to send it to the committee and ask that it be posted for meeting materials for next time. Does that make sense, Leah?
Yeah, I think that providing some notice if we're going to deliberate on anything is a good idea. So we can certainly put this as it's as a standalone agenda item if they have some specific things they'd like us to deliberate.
Okay, so I do have some specific things that they have sent to me now, but I'm the only one that has them. That's it's not in the meeting packet. So
It can be in your report if there it's okay for you to to speak to it in your report as long as well, these are things that they that were just emailed to you or that were that happened at a Dear J meeting.
This this is the report that came from the Dear J meeting and it does include some specifics around changes to the calendar and rationale behind changes to the calendar. So I'm happy to put that all to share that all now if it's appropriate to do that or if it's more appropriate to send it for the next meeting.
Yeah, let's put it on the calendar for the next meeting because we can amend the calendar labels really at any time. I think it's something that we could, you know, do justice to at a future meeting.
And then just finally, so they're they are working on the calendar updates and are also working on putting together a presentation for the committee. So they're working diligently on a few different updates for us.
Terrific. Thanks, Sharon. And to the RAC.
So first, thanks to Steve Rubenstein for the time and the experience he shared on the RAC. And although Steve won't will no longer be serving, Leah has volunteered to fill that school committee still position on the RAC. So at our last meeting on January 19th, both Leah and Kirk were present for our two-hour meeting. And Kirk presented on enrollment data and assessing to the towns and and in his report, there were links to Desi reports where he had garnered a lot of the information. In in some of the comments from people who have been involved with budgets and the school committee had to do with that they had never seen so much detail or in-depth analysis. And very, very grateful. So there were highly favorable responses to that. We will, we will have one more meeting and I think that the RAC's work on February 16th will be concluded. I do have another piece of information for you and this, you know, has relevance to us on school committee that a couple of weeks ago, I I spoke to Christine Lynch and Michelle Griffin at Desi. Talking about the timeline and their workload is as everybody's has been changed and impacted by COVID and and so they are not sure. In fact, they don't feel that they could have a review of our regional agreement amendment suggestions by any of the deadlines, you know, for the for the towns, for the warrants for this year. And so, and so this takes a little bit of pressure off of off us on the RAC and off and off school committee because the school committee, we will be the ones looking this over and you you're entitled to spend time with this. And having a timeline like this, what it means is we won't be able to have this on as articles on the warrants in the three towns for this spring. And and that's disappointing, but in terms of process, this is really, there are a lot of benefits to having some more time. So just to run through what this would mean, it would mean that because there aren't any special town meetings in the fall, and we certainly wouldn't want the towns to incur the the cost of putting on special town meetings just for the regional agreement. That means that the regional, the articles for the warrants of the three towns. And that means it wouldn't be till the spring 2023 meetings when, and this is a very important vote, we need a majority vote of our citizens, the voters who are at the town meetings. And what this means is that first of all, it is required that Desi review the regional agreement before it goes to the towns. And so the best case scenario is that there would be more time for school committee to look at what RAC is gonna give you. And and then you're, you know, having a vote on that before it goes to Desi. And just in case they have anything else that they might want to talk about. And then the good part is even before it goes to the town, there'd be time to have a public, a public session, a public meeting. And the school committee could call that. So actually, this could give us over the summer, which means that maybe even at the retreat. It would be a time for the school committee, you will receive what triple, RAC has sooner than that. But there's a lot on all of our agendas for the remainder of this year. And so it would give you time and then if it were at the retreat, if that's, you know, the decision, then that would give you some time to really look at it together. And then it could go to Desi and their timeframe at that point would likely be better. We could even share the regional agreement that that our triple A C is in is almost finished with. So all the people who have been working on this have been doing an excellent job. And I think when you see the regional agreement and you and you see how well organized it is that you you probably have some questions, but I think you're going to find it very much to your liking. So I thank Sharon for her work on this. And and again, I do want to thank Kirk. And I thank Leah. And so that's, that's about the the news on that. And it is kind of big news. It's a bit of a relief. It's a bit of a disappointment, but you know what? Some really solid work is going on.
Thanks, Mary. You where you see disappointment, I see a lot of hard work and we are super appreciative of you. I think I said this at the other, the meeting the other night, taking this bull by the horns and wrestling it to the ground. And you've just done so much work there. So grateful and keeping in mind that there's, we are in compliance. This delay does not put us in any jeopardy whatsoever. And to do that, to do this right is definitely what we want to do because this is a colossal undertaking. We don't want to have to do this again anytime soon. So Bravo. Thank you to all of you who have participated. Amy?
Yeah, everything Leah said and more. I think initially I was a little disappointed, but I do see the benefits of taking the time to do this, right? And the other thing that occurred to me is that I think this is gonna end up being the same time that we're asking the towns to take a vote for the school building project. Is that right, Leah?
I don't think so, but I'll defer to Joe on this. I think, Joe, that we would be ready in ju, maybe July or August. And therefore, we would be asking for funding at special fall meetings, but that's kind of temp. Let's knock. Am I right?
You know what? I I don't believe that's right. I thought that we were looking for approval funding in the spring of 23.
I think that the early vote option is June 2023.
Yeah, so June is after the June's after the town meetings. So Pat, do you, I feel like you're you may be shaking your head. Maybe you remember something?
I'm pretty sure that the it was June 2023. If that if we go for the early vote and that
But that's after the town meetings, right?
Well, Madam Chair, may I interject?
Of course.
As we're talking about when we would be going to the towns, and Ms. Marian Williams would be much better to explain this. But there is an MSBA meeting that presents this to approve the project for funding that meets in the summer of 2023. It is not unheard of that a town can approve the budget for the project prior to that meeting for consideration at that meeting. It is not the typical pathway. The typical pathway would be 120 days after that MSBA meeting. Would take us into the fall of 23. So depending on where we are in that process and what schematic design looks like, that would be something we would decide later. But the earliest possible date would be spring of 2023. The exact date of that is to be determined. So not knowing the dates of town meeting couldn't say for certain that would be the case. I think we would have to let time and the scope of the project play out.
Is that okay, Amy?
Yeah, I was just trying to think ahead and how those two would interact.
Yeah.
You know, what if any, if it would have any impact on that. So.
Good to, good to think about. Yeah, Sharon?
So Amy, I think that in terms of the regional agreement, there really aren't any the really the biggest change that is being made to the regional agreement is simply updating the number of the members of the school committee. All of the other things that, or correct me if I'm forgetting something, Mary, but the really the other things that we're talking about are updating in terms of adding in updates from that have come along in the law and clarifying things that are written in the in the regional agreement, but it's not really substantive changes. It's just clarifications. So in terms of presenting the regional agreement to the towns, it it's it's not what am I trying to say? It's not really a big decision that needs to be made. It's really just verifying and reiterating that this is the agreement that we have. But it's not significant changes that we're selling or bringing to the community.
Thanks, Sharon. All right, so that
I think Mary might have had something to say to that. Maybe she disagrees with me.
Is it if I go? No, no, I was actually just just putting thumbs up because Sharon, that 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 is correct. And when you think that, you know, I've said this before, 2003, when the the 1994 version was amended, they didn't go through Desi. And so there's a lot that needs to be updated and the organization, but the the main reason is to move the number from eight to 11 of us, which we did, and it was well within the law. So we're legal. It's valid, but there are laws and there is language that is a lot more clear. So no, Sharon, you're right. I was I was giving you a thumbs up, Sharon.
Thanks, Mary. All right, everybody. So that's the, that's that. Let's finish up with our CPAC advisory. Brett, what can you tell us?
No report.
All right. Thanks, Brett. Items for next agenda, everyone. So let's see here. Our next meeting is on February 9th. If you guys can see the planning calendar, is it helpful if I share it? Thumbs up if it's helpful if I share it. Okay, hold on. So now I can't see you. Just keep that in mind. But here is the planning calendar for the next meeting, February 9th. Only one meeting. I just give you one minute to look at it.
We can take off the RAC sharing the working document. We will, our meeting is subsequent. It's the 16th is is our meeting. So we won't be doing that.
Do you want it on a future meeting or a future date or to be determined?
Yeah, to be determined. Let's see where we are.
Got it.
What's going on?
Jump in, everybody. If you have something to add, I can't see you all. Amy, I think I see you.
Yeah, do I need to have an agenda item for the communications subcommittee if we want to have a survey that is being sent out to the community like?
You can handle that sort of thing in your sub. Well, no, we should put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, you have office hours on here as well. You want to keep that?
Let's replace it with this because this is the work that we've been doing. Thank you.
Yep. I can't see any hands. Anybody else?
Can we put on, I have the report from Dear J with the rationale for their specifics for their changes that they're suggesting for the calendar, if we can put that on.
And can you remind me, Sharon, is this when we Lori and you and I talked about her coming in with maybe a couple of other members of Dear J to do a more formal presentation?
Yes. So they're hoping to be able to have a presentation for us on that evening. And then there are the calendar updates.
Okie doke.
Thank you.
Yell it out, guys. Anybody else?
Yeah, I I would like to deal with with an issue that I tried, we tried to deal with about a year and a half to two years ago when we asked Pat to see if she could source a a minority owned bank that we could do some of our banking with. I would like to bring up a discussion on setting certain goals to purchase materials, supplies, services from I'm, I'll just throw a number up there. 10% minority owned businesses. I think it's, this is really a putting our money where our mouth is, what like, like I said, two years ago when we asked Pat to do that. And this would be maintenance supplies, office supplies, anything that we could share. And I think this, this is more important, quite truthfully in my own mind towards our equality goals than any of this other stuff.
Thanks, Steve. I put it on there. Last call. All right. Seems that is our last item of business at this point. There are no objections. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thanks, Steve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Nice, Rich. Good job. Let's go do the roll. I vote yes. Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
We're closing.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes, my dinner's getting cold.
Sorry, Brett?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
We are adjourned, everybody. Let's eat.